Hi, the Committee on Finance and Law will come to order. First item on the agenda is roll call. Mr. Speaker?
Present.
Mr. Fiore is present and Mr. Martin is absent. First item on the agenda is student activities. There are none for this warrant. Then we have two items in bills payable. One bill from fiscal 21 in the amount of $16,967.97, and then a full warrant for fiscal 22 of $351,494.11.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the warrants for FY21 and 22, and I find them in order. I have no questions. So I'll move we pay the bills payable and the warrants. FY21 at $16,967.97, and FY22 at $351,494.11.
And the Chair seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all in papers, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed. So vote aye. Then we have a memorandum with regard to expenditures for special education legal services. I don't know if Mr. Cabral has any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. So as was requested, I believe, by school committee member, Mr. DeMello, whenever you see a legal charge in the warrant, we will provide you with a memo summarizing the work that was undertaken by the special education attorney. So as you see in the memo, the special education attorney charges were for phone calls, responding to emails from TPS staff, drafting letters for hearing requests, and reviewing student IEPs, and also providing counsel. So those were the services rendered by the special education legal counsel.
But, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Chairman, this is a good update. If you remember, we lost a legal counsel who left and we outsourced it. And certainly, this is a great savings, and I have no problem with this update, and I'm moving receiving place on file.
If I could just add just one piece. I believe to date, we've spent just under $1,500 in legal services related, again, related to special education only.
Right.
For the television audience, the amount in the memo which we had is $1,000 and change. Anyway, all those in favor of the place on our files, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed. So vote aye. Anything else to come before this for the good of the order? Hearing on and hesitate a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Chair seconds, all those in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, we're out of here.
I want to call the regular meeting of the Taunton School Committee Wednesday, October 20th, 2021 to order. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to this community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Absolutely. Ms. Doherty. Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present, Mr. Martin's absent, Ms. Almeida.
Present.
And Mr. DeMello is absent, and Mayor O'Connell's not here, and Mr. Souza.
Present.
There you go.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan, appreciate it. Item B, approval of the minutes, October 6th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the Student Advisory Committee Report, and this evening we have Nicole Drake and Natalie Duncan. Welcome, ladies. You can take your mask off while you're speaking if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Nicole Drake, and I'm a senior representative of the Student Advisory Committee. I'm here with Natalie Duncan, who's a freshman representative of the Student Advisory Committee, and tonight we're going to speak on behalf of Taunton High. So overall, the transition to full in-person learning at Taunton High has been going great, but we've also been putting things in place to make the transition go even smoother. Overall, we've been focused on getting students more involved and connected in the school community. One of the ways that we're going to do this is by creating a lockbox for suggestions of what can improve at Taunton High and what is going well, and we're going to make this lockbox available to all students. We're going to put it in the main lobby. That way, we'll get a better view of what students at Taunton High think, and a good representation of the full student body. We're also going to be holding student meetings every Friday morning. Mr. Holcomb is running them, and they'll be called Leadership Summit Meetings, and these meetings will basically be a way for students to get in touch with Mr. Holcomb and have a conversation with him, and share suggestions of what they think could improve at Taunton High. They could also share what's going well at Taunton High and give feedback about the overall community and environment. We're also going to be encouraging students to get more involved and connected in the community by pushing involvement in clubs around the school, and the way we're going to do this is by putting QR codes around the school in places where students are around the most, like the main lobby and on lunch tables in the cafeteria, and these QR codes will be available for students to scan, and once they do, links to all the clubs information at Taunton High will pop up. So it'll create a more accessible way for students to get involved at Taunton High and get information on the clubs and see how they can join, and this will overall make them feel more connected to the community, so we think it's a great idea. We're also planning on organizing another subcommittee with a couple of students from each grade, so that way we'll have a more accurate representation of the student body at Taunton High, and we're also pushing to get faculty more involved. So the THS administration is trying to get faculty more involved on Twitter and other social media, so they can share all the positive things going on at Taunton High and have a better connection to the students. And I think that's all. Thank you for having me tonight. Natalie, I want to present.
I'm going to present a gift on behalf of the Student Advisory Committee to Mr. Souza as a token of our appreciation.
I won't take up the time here, but it looks like a THS sweatshirt or a...I'm excited. I am humbled. Thank you. Relay this to Ariceli, Hector, and Ava, and then you two tell them, thank you very much, I'm humbled. It's always...I was on the high school subcommittee for a number of years, especially in my earlier years here because my son was at the high school, but I think I just went off when Nathan came on because I gave him my slot, I didn't give him my slot, but his son is there, so I said, I offered him my slot, is what I did, and I think it's always, it was always a pleasure to go to the high school subcommittee, especially meet with the students. So you guys are great leaders, and I'm looking forward to working with you at least the last two months of my term. Thank you.
My mic is just a little bit.
I'm sorry, Ms. Doherty, do you have a question?
No, I have a point of personal privilege.
Yes, go ahead.
Just ask congratulations, but just so that there isn't anyone who thinks that Mrs. Almeida and I, who are leaving the school board, didn't get a present. We did.
Thank you.
We got it last night at the Student Advisory Committee, and I'm not telling you what's in it, so you're going to have to find out for yourself. So thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that, because I forgot to say that, and I appreciate that. At the very least, the three of us will be able to go out in Do we usually vote on that? Okay, I think now.
Let's receive it in place and on file.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public input, when? No public input. No public input. Moving right along. Human Resource Department presentation. The enclosure is inside the packet. Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Chairman Souza. So I'd like to welcome our four guests from the Human Resource Department. We have Dr. Cheryl Butts, who is the Executive Director of Human Resources. We have Melanie Rosado, who is the Human Resource Manager. We have Rebecca Reposa, who is the Human Resource Specialist, and we also have Baby Bella, who is joining us this evening as well. And I'd be remiss if I did not recognize or acknowledge the hard work and effort of Judy Moniz, who is the Administrative Assistant who supports the Human Resource Department. Last spring, you may recall that there was some restructuring that took place within the Human Resource Department, and we were able to reallocate existing resources to expand the Human Resource Department in order to provide better services and more efficient services. So I've asked the Human Resource Department to present this evening and to share with the school board, as well as the public, all the great work and all the hard work that has taken place since they came on board last spring, and also for them to talk about how we are more efficient and how they are working and have plans for the future, as they just came off a very busy spring and a very busy summer. So with that being said, I'll turn things over to our Human Resource Department, and again, welcome on behalf of the School Committee and the Taunton Public Schools.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, and thanks all of you for inviting us to be here tonight. As Mr. Cabral just mentioned, he introduced myself, I'm Cheryl Butts, Melanie Rosado, Human Resources Manager, Rebecca Reposa, Human Resources Specialist, Baby Bella, Susan to me, and he mentioned Judy Moniz, who's a wonderful admin assistant who's not with us today. And so this comprises the Human Resources Department, and tonight, what we're hoping to do is to just share a little bit with you.
Sorry. Whoops. Can you hear me now? Okay. So tonight, we just want to share a little bit with you on who we are, what we do on a daily basis. We're a very busy department. We do everything from soup to nuts. We help and service 1,300 employees for the district. That's a lot of employees on any given day. We never know what we're walking into, but it's something that we're all passionate about and enjoy. And that being said, what we'd like to do is pass this on to our Human Resources Manager, Melanie, to share with you what we do in terms of recruitment, and we're going to take turns tonight. We all had a hand in this presentation, and we're all going to present as a team tonight, so just bear with us. It's a team effort. Hello, everyone. As Dr. Butts mentioned, my name is Melanie Rosado, and I am the HR Manager. So I'm going to go over our recruitment process, and there are many steps in this process. Show my face? So first things first is advertising. We post internally, we post on our school's website, and we post on School Spring. New this school year, we are posting our teacher's lounge, and teacher's lounge is a diverse forum, and their mission is to recruit and retain educators of colors, and that ties to our strategic plan, which is to diversify our staff and celebrate diversity. We also post our handshake, and handshake is more for college students, graduates, to search for vegan jobs. We recently started to post on Indeed, and we're also doing individual outreach, and that also ties to our strategic plan in regards to partnership and community partnership. We receive lots and lots of applicants, so it's important that we screen our candidates. We conduct interviews, we do background checks. In regards to credentials, we make sure that the candidate has the proper licensure, making sure that the license is active. If it's a position that requires certificate, we make sure that that candidate has a certificate. So screening our applicants is very important. Going on to our recruitment continued, which is onboarding. Judy Moniz has hands on the onboarding. She deals with the paperwork, makes sure that everything's processed, making sure that the candidate is cleared, and she then goes to do the appointment letter and extend the job offer. Job descriptions, we maintain the job descriptions. That is something that is ongoing, because we do want to work on updating our job descriptions. Job fairs, we...I say we, even though I wasn't here last year, but we conducted a virtual job fair that was very successful, and we are also planning to attend job fairs when the time does present itself. Substitute teachers, the HR Department handles the substitute teachers. We deal with the interviewing, we deal with the new hire paperwork, and we also send out the letters. And then we have our SR2 funds, which we have around 90 that we have posted, and that is something that is still ongoing in regards to our SR2 funds.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rebecca, Human Resources Specialist, and I'm going to talk about what's new in human resources. One of the things that I implemented when I first started was a track and hire sort of spreadsheet, and with this spreadsheet, it captures all sorts of data that has been really helpful to many different people. Some of the data that we track is new employees, exiting employees. We track whether they're resigning, or it's a new position, they're retiring. We look at a cost savings budget analysis. We're tracking, we're putting their step in track in there, seeing if we're saving anything from previous employee to new employee. We're looking at licensure status, new teacher status, diversity initiatives. If there are any specific schools that need help with hiring, we can pull it up and look and say, hey, what can we do to help you? So that's been really, really helpful over the last several months. It's an ongoing process. And then some of you may be familiar with Talent Ed's Recruit and Hire. We're revitalizing that, and with the Talent Ed's Recruit and Hire, that will help us streamline the application and the recommendation process. Right now, if somebody applies for a job, it comes either through, you know, it's on School Spring, or it comes to the email, and then the hiring managers slash principals do wait for us to upload the application to a folder that they can then review. We are very timely with that, but with this new process, applicants will be able to go right on to this...it's through School Spring, so they'll go on, they'll apply. The applications will be automatically saved, so then when a principal or a hiring manager goes into their account, they can see everybody who's applied, they can reach out to schedule interviews, they can make recommendations, they can send thank you emails. So there's lots that they can do that's more automatic versus now where everything's manual and does take more time. So we're really looking forward to that. We've already had a couple of meetings scheduled. We had one last week, we're having one again this week, just to kind of look at the backend, look at what was done before, update everything that we need to update. We're looking at, you know, any school changes, addresses, things like that, any new hiring managers or principals that need access. So it's definitely going to help us streamline the process. And then, let's see. And then, so...also, what's new with human resources? Over the summer, we received, you know, a nice grant from Bristol County Savings Bank, and that grant was really designed for us to work with high school students in Taunton, to expose them to different types of careers in education. So we hired eight diverse high school students that were juniors and seniors, and they all worked either in administration here with different members of the leadership team, they worked in the Title I Summer Program Extended Day, a couple in technology, and basically, you know, we want to expose them early on to what different types of careers are in education, because what we want to do is then continue to work with them, track them when they go off to college, help them maybe explore colleges, what the options are. We provided some professional development for them, really had members of the leadership come together and talk to them about their experiences and, you know, just really what to look forward to when they have these types of internships, and how to take that moving forward. They also came to the admin retreat and presented the Boston Celtics Workshop Playbook. They gave different scenarios on discrimination and bias and, you know, presented those scenarios and asked some really challenging questions, and they really got everybody to open up and kind of discuss, you know, how to confront these challenging situations. And then also grants, and I'll wrap it up. We also have applied through DESI for a diversification pilot program, and through this, it kind of goes along with what we did with the interns. We'll be able to implement a high school education pathway and continue to expose the students to different types of careers, track them through college, encourage them to apply once they're out of college, and hopefully bring them back to be either educators or faculty in Taunton Public Schools. And then also, offering financial incentives to different types of educators that we'll bring to the district in the form of loan reimbursement, reallocation assistance, and more.
Thank you, Rebecca. What I'd like to share with you now is some statistics. The data doesn't lie, and I always like to show where we were and where we are and where we're heading. So what we put together here is a little something to show you over the last few years, the vacancies or the positions that we've had to fill. And if we take a look, we'd see that it's quite a number of vacancies, and these vacancies could lead up to thousands of applications in any given year, and actually, the last count for last year was over 3,000 applications. And as Rebecca just explained, it's a very manual process to actually handle each application and place in folders and so forth. So we're very excited about the Recruit and Hire initiative that's new, and that we're hoping to launch by the end of the year. As you can see, this year, we're not, we're only two months into, a few months into the school year, and already, we're at 307 vacancies, and that's quite a lot. And the reason why this is a little inflated is because this includes the ESOP positions, which we had over 90 ESOP positions that we posted for this year. So it's a very busy office in terms of recruitment and applications and so forth, and setting up interviews and all that good stuff. Something else I'd like to share with you, information from the Department of Ed, from a very hot topic now throughout the country, actually, in terms of diversification. This statistics that I have here is from 2014, and the reason why I decided to start from 2014 is because that's when I came on board here at TPS. Yes, I've been here over seven years. Time flies when you're having fun. So at a quick glance, these numbers will show you that at that time, according to the DESI data that we obviously submitted, we had roughly 23 non-white staff members on board at TPS. And like I said, over the last few years, it's always been a goal and a priority of the HR office, and even when I started here working with the former department head, Attorney Mitchell, we worked very closely to try and diversify staff. And the numbers don't lie, because according to the next report...did I move that? Oops. Here we go. It will indicate that over time, and yes, it does take time, we are now up to 44 non-white staff members. So we are diversifying. It's a slow process, but we do have processes and systems in place that we've been using, and we've been relentless. So I'm actually very happy. That might not seem like a large number, but we do, we are capturing and we are retraining managers on what to look for, where to look for them, and how to attract diverse candidates and how to retain them here. Another thing that I'm happy to share with you on the other slide is that here at Taunton Public Schools, we have a very high retention rate, which means that once we get, once we hire people and we motivate and train and develop, they stay with us. And again, these numbers don't lie. We're pretty high up there. So people actually like working for TPS, and we want to continue that. So spread the word. I'm going to hand it over to Melanie now for a quick review of our quarry and safest systems.
So another thing that our department oversees is a quarry and fingerprints. If you see, from 2019 to current, we have processed over 1,600 quarries. Results are processed weekly, and we share the results with the schools, and that's just because the schools needs to know when their volunteers are cleared to volunteer. Fingerprints is a statewide fingerprint service. A training is required to have access to that system, and from 2014 to present, we have processed 5,517 fingerprints. And I just want to mention that we do have the help of Courtney. She inputs the data for us and also keeps track of the quarry and the fingerprints, but our department does oversee the quarry and the fingerprints.
Thanks, Mel. So now, I'm going to share with you another aspect of what we do on a daily basis, and that is that we work with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and we are a district, and we are always trying to help our employees when it comes to licensure and certification. And so some of the things that we work towards with the Department of Ed are obviously the licensure requirements for new teachers. We try to counsel employees when they have questions or concerns, looking for next steps to move from initial to professional and so forth. The renewal process for license verifications for DESI, because in order to move to different levels of licensure, they require paperwork, and we do the verifications and sign the forms and so forth, and help facilitate that process. Another big thing of what, another big hot topic are waivers. These are things that we seek for people that we deem that are qualified but not certified for certain positions. It's not something that DESI gives out lightly. It does require a lot of work to prove that we have in fact tried to recruit qualified and certified candidates, but again, it is something that we oversee. We also have reporting and portals that we need to work with DESI to upgrade and submit on timely basis. We do expedite reviews when requested to do so for our employees. And another new element over the last two years is the emergency licensure. This has caused quite, is quite an interest for people that are willing to try out current education, and it is something that we try to counsel, and not just to get the emergency licensure, but once licensed, we help them work towards initial licensure. And the emergency licenses will expire at the end of this school year, so we're very busy trying to work with those that currently are working for us on an emergency license. Only time will tell whether or not this will be extended. Those are just some of the things that we're actively working on with DESI.
Okay. Leaves of absences. So we process medical leaves, intermittent leaves, maternity and paternity, family medical leaves, personal leaves, discretionary leaves, and extensions of leaves. So this school year so far, I have processed 46 leaves. Most of what we process is family medical leaves. I do want to point out that we work closely with payroll, and that's just because they need to know how to put them in for sick time and accrued time, how to pay them, so we work closely with that department. And I want to mention Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And I want to mention Family First Coronavirus Response Act. We work closely with, again, the payroll department and the nurses. And specifically the nurses, because the nurses verify that those employees are going to be out and the amount of time that they're going to be out. So to date, we have processed 228 FFCRAs. And just if anyone doesn't know, FFCRA has been extended until April of 2022.
Thanks, Mel. Some of the other HR functions that we've listed here that we won't go into in detail would be, well, actually Rebecca touched on the interns, but we also have student interns, observations, and student teaching. We process salary adjustments twice a year. Again, this is something that we work closely with, with the payroll department. And yes, HR actually works for a lot of different departments, including the city. This past year with the FFCRAs is something that has brought us together to try to work together to come up with systems and processes in place to process these various requests. And every leave that we, that we process, we also work with the city to ensure that people are being paid correctly and having their benefits properly deducted. So it's, it really is, there are several steps in each process, and many times we have to work closely with different departments. And that's all part of what it, all part of the team. So actually, when we talk about HR, we have HR representatives with the city that we're in touch with daily that help us through some of these processes. Other things that we take care of, the professional teacher status, which we work on once a year. We're always working on continuously training and developing professional development for our employees, trying to manage and coach hiring managers on employee discipline, grievances, attending workshops to get updates on employment law, working on negotiations, working with the superintendent's office for rewards and recognition programs, making sure that we share communication with all employees, employee 504 plans or something else that we work on, processing terminations, attending unemployment hearings, reassignments, participation in committees, and some of the committees that we've been involved in over the years are listed here, cultural competency, English language learners, curriculum PD, social and emotional learning, and most recently, the superintendent's Social Justice Advisory Committee. Our department is also responsible for contract renewals and personnel investigations, something that I'm very big on are, would be succession planning, working on continuous improvement plans, and a wellness program. We depend on the city for the, for help with the wellness program, and we've been offering a lot of programs, but because of COVID, they've all been remote now. Zoom meetings, Zoom exercises, fitness, stress, all these fun little competitions that they have in terms of walking and putting in your steps and so forth, all done remote now. We also facilitate NIAX certification for our educational assistants that are interested in, in pursuing that. And our wonderful admin assistant, Ms. Moniz, is always working on the, whoops, I forgot to move the slide, the staffing reports. That being said, I'm going to hand it over to Rebecca to share with you some of the upcoming news.
So one of the things that I've been working on, which you won't see until it's ready to be live, is updating the HR department's website. So it's easy to navigate for staff and to really add some new and existing resources for our staff. Some of the changes that we'll be implementing are FAQs and who to contact, you know, in the Human Resources Department now that there's four of us. Also, new hire resources and different types of forms that new hires or current employees might need. We'd like to implement quarterly newsletters, direct access to talent ed, wellness activities, things like that. And then in terms of grants, I touched on that a little bit before, but we are currently awaiting on the decision made by DESI to see if we will receive the Teacher Diversification Pilot Program grant. And if we do, this funding and initiative is just one of the ways we can really build on our DEI initiatives and work towards recruiting, developing, and retaining more diverse and highly qualified staff for our students. So we're really excited about that.
So as Rebecca mentioned, we will be working on DEI initiatives, and we want to organize, you know, a workshop or a book club, sending out articles so our employees are updated on DEI initiatives. And then our interns, our interns were amazing this summer, and they were very vocal about wanting to attend and do campus visits. So we would like to bring them to some campuses and hopefully have our transportation department bring our interns to and from the campus visits.
And just so you know, the internship program, that we're going to continue to have them help out as needed on special projects. And we're hoping to have another successful summer next year. We're going to have, maybe make, make it a little more competitive, because we've had some interests and we've had a lot of guidance counselors contact us asking about if the program will be running again and how could, how could they get interested people who submit names or recommendations to us. So folks, that's all the fun and interesting work that we do here in the HR department. And we are just so happy to be able to share this with you so you have a better idea of what we do. We're very excited to continue to grow relationships with other departments and with the city. I think COVID has given us, you know, it presented its challenges, but we were able to overcome and we will continue to overcome. So thank you all for your time and for having us.
Wow. Thank you, Dr. Butts, Melanie, Rebecca, and Judy.
Baby Bella.
Baby Bella, oh, I can't forget Baby Bella. I've been talking to her the last couple of times I've been in the office, too. And I think that one thing that I have to, I've got one question before I turn it over to my colleagues, and then, but one thing I have to state is that we have 1,200 employees, and we're the largest employer in the city, public employer in the city. And you four ladies do, do all of that. And you haven't been together that long in this capacity, so it seems like it's already a well-oiled machine in just a, in a few months or so. So congratulations on that. And I think one thing we also have to state is we have 600 teachers. So the licensure for 600 teachers and then another 600 staff, custodians, nurses, educational assistants, and administrative principals and administrators, that all falls under you. And it's, it's pretty amazing where we've come. But just one question, I think there's a misnomer in the, in the public. You know, you read things in the local paper, you see things in social media. Dr. Butts, could you just talk a little bit about your efforts since you've been the director, but also you've been in HR under Attorney Mitchell about, about hiring diverse, the diverse staff? Could you talk about the initiatives that have been going on for several years in that, and what's, what's been going on with that? Because I think there's a misnomer in the public that, quote, "We're not doing enough", but we're doing more than enough. And any statistics on that, or anything you can tell me, please?
Oh, oh, now you're talking my language, Mr. Souza, because this is what I do, this is what I live for, and this is what we've been doing for the last almost 10 years, even before my time. And even before social justice and the equity was, was a thing here in Taunton, I'm proud to say that we here in Taunton were already tackling this, these challenging topics and forming committees, cultural proficiency committees and so forth. And what I think, and if I may, is to just quickly share my view that I think is, is important for people to understand. There's a historical aspect of the teacher shortage. And I, I listen and I hear the concerns and I'm doing all that I can. But historically, we have to look historically, and we'll see that before the Supreme Court ordered public schools to integrate, we had several black educators teaching primarily black students in these schools, okay? We had segregation. And once this was eliminated, we had about tens of thousands of black teachers and principals that were displaced and no longer had jobs, okay? Now, the black students were, were put to integrate into these schools. That in itself took away jobs and has left these positions, even back then, appear unattractive for people of color. I think people often forget the historical perspective, okay? So we had a number of diverse educators. Their jobs were taken away. There was no, no attraction to, to, to go into education for fear of not being hired. These people found other jobs, okay? Since then, we had the introduction of teacher certification exams. Let's just make it a little harder. Those exams provided another barrier, okay? Statistics show that only 40% of people of color who take these exams actually pass these exams. There's an issue there that we need to address. That is beyond my realm, okay? Now, before that, if we look at a national level, the population of teachers of color is only 7%. Black teachers throughout the US, 7%. Hispanic teachers throughout the US, 8%. Barely 14% of teachers of color, okay? We've got to look at that. Now we're looking at Taunton. We're just one, one state, one district, and we one piece of that pie, okay? The people of color that enter, that enter into tertiary education is roughly 40%. Less than 40% will graduate, and only 14% are majors in education. And of that 14%, only a quarter of those people, I'm sorry, at least a quarter of those people will not pass a teacher certification exam. So therein lies the problem. We're doing what we can. We have, we've gone virtually. We formed alliances with national and local diverse, diverse organizations. We have networked on foot, going to people, people that we know, word of mouth, utilize social media. We've done everything that we can. We are beyond creativity. My humble opinion is this is, it's time to get policymakers involved. Why is this happening? If we only have such a small percentage of the pie, how are we expected to attract these people of color? That's, that's my two cents.
Thank you. That's a higher level question than what we have here. That's a state and national problem, it sounds like.
It is a national problem.
Yeah.
And, and Mrs. Souza, if you're interested, I have the, I have the statistics, I have the report. It was done by Harvard Business School Education Department. It was done pre-pandemic. The pandemic has just put another layer, layer on everything. And it's not just the school, not just schools and education that are affected.
Thank you. And yeah, can only imagine, people aren't really flocking to be teachers across the board, I imagine. Thank, thank you. My colleagues, any questions from the colleagues? Ms. Dorothy?
Oh, yes, I have, I have several questions and a comment on your last comment about state and national policy.
Well, yes, we have a state, we have, we have possible policymaker right here. Go ahead, Ms. Dorothy.
So in the past, people would apply for positions, and from time to time, all of us, I'm sure, have heard, "Oh, I sent in my application and I've never heard anything." And then I went back onto the jobs website, on the Taunton website, and the jobs filled, and I've never heard anything. The other aspect of "I've never heard anything" is people that are interviewed who say the same thing. "I interviewed, I, no one called me, I guess I didn't get the job, that job was filled, I never heard anything." So what is the process that you use to respond as quickly as you possibly can? And I see the data where you're reviewing lots and lots of applications. Do you drop that information into a database that spits out a letter that says, "I have your application," or "Thank you for the interview, we're not, we've filled it," or whatever a letter would say? And what's the time lag for that?
Well, to answer your question, the jobs that are posted on School Spring, once they've been filled and we appoint that person or we check that off online, it automatically sends a "thank you but no thank you" email notification to the candidate. So they get that. We also have a sample letter available on our personnel handbook that hiring managers have access to, which we encourage them to send to candidates that they've interviewed and tell them, "Thanks but no thanks." So we really, we do have a process in place. We do have the template in place. The HR department themselves, once we activate or we allocate that person as being somebody that's been hired, like I said, that, that automated email will go out. So that's a process right now, and that's pretty automatic once we, we check that out or we check that off on the website. I do know that, yes, we do have thousands of applications, and there will be people that maybe got missed, and for that I apologize. But we do have systems in place and the templates available for the hiring managers, and it is my understanding that, that they, they do use them.
So the answer to the question is it is taking a shorter period of time to respond to applicants and not only those who just send in their application, but also who are interviewed but not hired. So there's some automated way in which that gets, that gets done. All of us, perhaps from time to time, have been on the end of an interview process and not ever hear. And you, I get questions about, "Should I call? I don't want to bother them. Maybe if I call, they won't hire me." And I'm talking about not the recent past, but the past. So I'm assuming that, given that the department has been reorganized, you have more people, that it becomes easier, more efficient to get that.
Well, yes. And the fact that we'll be rolling out the recruit and hire will also make that more timely, Ms. Dorothy, because all of the applications will now be advertised online, not just on the website, and all the applications will be, will be handled via School Spring. So now anybody that applies, and once we allocate who a candidate has been hired, will have that notice once they have an email address, because you're going to have to have an email address in order to apply online. And so that will really speed things up, and it will also take the burden off the hiring managers from having to send those letters themselves.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions if nobody else has. I'm, I'm interested in the grant that you have submitted, if you haven't heard yet, whether or not it's been awarded to us. And some of the, I'm sure it was included in the grant proposal, that you would offer financial incentives in the form of loan payment reimbursement, relocation assistance, which is not a financial thing, signing bonuses. How, how do we manage loan payment reimbursement and signing bonuses in the light of a collective bargaining agreement that we have with teachers who don't get that same advantage if they're not hired under this teacher diversification pilot program?
Well, I think that if, if we are, these are new, these are new incentives that districts are trying to offer to incentivize diversification. I would think that if we will offer the grant, if we were approved, and I'm, I'm very hopeful that Mr. Cabral and I can work with the unions to come up with some sort of a MOU, because the intention of the, of the grant is to attract diverse candidates. And I do know for a fact that other districts have been offered it. I'm not sure, we'd have to do some more research, so I could certainly get back to you on how other districts, districts have been doing that, but it is something fairly new.
One question and then a statement. In the staffing data, comprehensive, and thank you for that, first of all, I note that we have many more women, almost six to one or seven to one than we have men, which is interesting. I would not have guessed that. And are, when we're looking at staffing data, are you talking about all staff, cafeteria workers, custodians, groundskeepers, and professional staff, or just professional staff?
For the data that was included here tonight, this is all our staff.
All staff.
Yeah. Not just certificated and not, not just teachers, just everybody.
Thank you. So just finally, just to give you a little bit of hope in terms of the state effort to, the legislative effort to deal with the problem of diversifying the teaching workforce. There were a half a dozen bills that have been filed and heard on Monday that speak to the diversification, ways in which that could happen. One of those bills is a bill that I filed, and I was very pleased that President Clark at Bridgewater testified to the bill that I filed. And also the president of Bristol Community College, both of whom gave me the idea of what should be contained in this piece of legislation, so I won't take full credit for it. But there is, and the chair of the Education Committee, Alice Peish, filed an omnibus, I mean, it's a really omnibus bill addressing these issues. And the first aspect of her piece of legislation is to change the MTEL so that it is more culturally sensitive. So the problem that you've outlined with black and brown people particularly who have difficulty passing the MTEL for whatever reason, will not have that, that, that level of who have difficulty passing the MTEL for whatever reason, will not have that level of difficulty. It's just, it's very costly, it costs lots of money to take the test. Some of these folks get their, finish their degree and take that test over and over and over again, as you have pointed out. So, I think that that's very important. Her bill is H six eight five, if you want to write a written testimony in support of that, if you want to go look at it and see what it is.
Well, you just made my night. I was just giving you my two cents, and now you're telling me that it's been validated and people are hearing us. So, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. And my bill is five seven three, H five seven three, so you can send oral testimony as part of that bill as well.
Wonderful.
I have a feeling that it's all gonna, the sentiment for this kind of legislation is all going to be brought together in a single piece of legislation.
That's wonderful news, thank you. It pays for us to have, to know people in high places.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Representative Dougherty. I'm just going to say that I've had an opportunity over the twelve years that I've been here, been in the room and having to speak directly to Representative Alice Peish, the chair of education. And there's no stronger advocate for education than Alice on the Hill. And she's pretty sharp. I should say pretty sharp, she's very sharp. And every time I talk to her, I learn something new. So, anyone that has an opportunity to talk to Alice is certainly going to gain information. So, I'm glad to hear all of that, thank you. Let's see, Mr. Pulowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be quick. Dr. Butts, Melanie, Rebecca, Judy, Baby Bella, thank you so much for the great presentation. It's very clear, all the work that you all are doing to attract, recruit, and get these excellent staff members. I'd be interested to know, what do you think is the most, I guess, hopeful or most effective initiative that you guys have to retain these staff members once you get them?
That's a very good question, because people keep talking about recruiting, but we're not, we have to think about retention. And this is something else that I'm passionate about. And I personally think that we need to have some supports in place for people of color. People will work if they feel supported and if there's a support system with other people of color, okay? You know, when you watch that movie, when you say, if you build it, they will come? Well, same concept, you know? They want to see people like them working here so that they could feel like they have people that they could relate to. I think we have done a good job thus far. We just need to continue our efforts in doing that. And we need to give them what they need. And we need to let the hiring managers and the principals and give them the training that they need or, you know, ideas on how to do this. We've been doing a good job, but like I said, there's always room for improvement. But that's a good question. We can't just hire, we need to retain and motivate.
Absolutely. And then just the second follow-up question, kind of the other side of the coin. So, I guess, in the past, if we've been losing quality staff members that we would otherwise have wanted to keep, are we seeing any trends? Are we seeing any, you know, opportunities of improvement in like exit interviews or whatever? Are there reasons that we're losing people?
So, the exit interviews is something that we're working on. We're trying to decide, do we do exit interviews or exit surveys? Some districts do surveys where it's very informal. And as you get a resignation, you submit this survey and you have them fill it out, and we get feedback. I'm sorry, what was the last part of your question? In doing that, is, do we know why they're leaving, is what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, it's the other side of the coin. It's like, what are we doing to keep people? And then if we are losing people, how do we learn, I guess, learn from our mistakes or, you know, so that we don't?
So, you're right in that the exit interviews will help with that data. Right now, when people submit resignations, we do acknowledge and make note of the reason. And usually, it's for another job. What I've been seeing during COVID times, people are leaving based on jobs closer to home. So, they're staying in education, but maybe they don't want to commute, so they want to work closer to home. I've had colleagues and educators that I know take remote positions. We have a lot of companies that are doing, educational companies, like the Virtual School and Virtual Learning Forum. They've taken that a step up. And the quality of life in working remote is, you know, we can't match that. So, they're staying in education, but they're doing, people are leaving for three things that are, which I, by the way, read in the Wall Street Journal this week. They're leaving for more money, they're leaving for, what did I tell you? I'm sorry, it was three things, more money, flexibility, and happiness, okay? Those are the reasons that over four point three million people quit their jobs in August. That's just not in education, that's across the board. And those are the reasons people are leaving. They want a better quality of life, they want more money, they just want to be happy. And what makes them happy is working in their pajamas and slippers.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent in a second. But, you know, that's a very interesting, you know, there's more to H.R. than what we're doing in this little world here. There's how you apply H.R. across the board at a state and national level. And that's what you're keeping up on. And I think I would be remiss, I'm going to turn to the superintendent, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, we have a gem here in this department, but you were on a national stage as a national speaker on diverse hiring.
Correct.
On a national level at a conference in Denver?
Correct, good memory, yes.
In Denver, just several months ago. So, I just want to let people know that even though our little world here in Taunton, we certainly still have a lot of top shelf and high-level employees. And Cheryl, Dr. Butts is certainly one of those. And she's really, really taking our H.R. department, as well as our other ladies here, to a new level.
We have a good team, thank you. And we have a very supportive superintendent. If it wasn't for him and you, I would not have been able to share what Taunton is doing here. And let me tell you, Taunton is ahead of the game. I had conversations and people were impressed by what we're doing here in terms of diversification and having our Social Justice Advisory Committee. We have been ahead of the game and we will continue to stay ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Cabral?
Actually, I'll forfeit my time to Mr. Fury.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy.
I'm sorry, well, I just wanted to kick in before the superintendent came in. I've been on a couple of the task forces and community input teams with regard to diversity. So, I've worked with Dr. Butts privately on a lot of this stuff. But I wanted to offer public support for whatever is done with the diversification efforts. I've had a few ideas that I've kicked in as well, and I know the department is pursuing those. And I just want to say, what I've said behind closed doors, I want to say openly. I'm with you, I'd do whatever I can do to help.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your support, all of you. Thanks for having us tonight.
Mr. Cabral?
No, I would just like to, you know, just to kind of reiterate. I believe the pandemic has exposed or has brought to light, you know, the need for a strong and a robust human resource department. And when you think about the work that Attorney Mitchell and Judy Moniz with Dr. Butts, you know, a team of three, what they were asked to accomplish during very difficult times and to where we are now, I think we need to recognize and give credit where credit is due. Because those three individuals worked very hard under the most extenuating circumstances. So, as we come out of the pandemic, many lessons learned. And those of you who know me know, I'm never satisfied. I believe that there's always room for growth and room for improvement. So, we will continue to push the boundaries. We will continue to try to be a leader in southeastern Massachusetts, Indian Massachusetts, and continue to share our work with others and learn best practices from others and apply it here at the Taunton Public Schools. So, it's just the tip of the iceberg, there's still a lot of work to be done. And as long as I'm superintendent here in Taunton, we'll continue to strive for continued improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Thank you, ladies, have a good night. Thank you, moving on, Superintendent's report, Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Chairman Souza. So, I believe I have four topics that I wanted to share with the committee this evening. One I'm very, very excited about and very proud is the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, announced on October 12, 2021, that it would commit nearly $1.2 billion to 2,500 schools across the country. These schools and organizations are some of those that applied for support within the $7.7 billion Emergency Connectivity Fund. According to the FCC, the Taunton Public Schools will receive $1.1 million in equipment and nearly $600,000 in services through obligated funding. These totals come out to just about $1.7 million. The funding for the Taunton Public Schools will be seen in the form of district-wide technology, such as online communication tools, laptops, tablets, Wi-Fi hotspots to ensure that our families have reliable Wi-Fi connectivity at home, to and from school, modems, routers, and broadband connections for students and staff. Specifically, Taunton will field the needed support in off-campus learning, along with many other school districts. Homework and virtual learning in many communities, as well as ours, because we don't know where this pandemic may pivot or shift, will continue to play an important role in COVID-19 throughout our district. I also wanted to share some news that I was very proud of. And I know sometimes certain departments in the school department or certain departments in the city sometimes have a negative light shed on them. But I also, I think it's also important to share the positive work that is taking place in our special education department. And it's also important to share important work or recognition when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recognizes our staff and our special, the Education Department for their continued efforts towards excellence. So, I'm proud to announce that the Taunton Public Schools has received a report from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that showed positive results in the district's initiatives and indicators relating to special education equity. The report outlined five initiatives and indicators. And in none of these areas, again, none of these areas, were the Taunton Public Schools flagged for having inequities or needing improvement. I want to repeat that again. Of these five initiatives and indicators, none of these areas were the Taunton Public Schools flagged as having inequities or needing improvement. The report, which was received on Thursday, October 15, is part of DESI's priority to increase educational access and equity for the state's most marginalized students, especially students with disabilities. This priority necessitates that inequities are identified in special education and how local districts can respond to them. So, what this report states is that we are working to address inequities and that we have responded appropriately based on the guidance and based on the recommendations of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, I won't go into further detail regarding what those indicators are. You have it in your report, and you can read them at your leisure. But I will close in saying that not being identified or flagged in any of these categories in DESI's report is a true testament to the teachers and administrators within our schools, specifically our dedicated and passionate special education staff members. The Taunton Public Schools will remain diligent in our approach to special education. The Taunton Public Schools will continue to adhere to state and federal special education guidelines to provide every student in the Taunton Public Schools the highest level of access to education and equity across all grade levels. I also want to provide you with an update from DECA. Again, I cannot commend the students and the staff at Taunton High School for their leadership and how DECA continues to be at the forefront and continues to be a leader in southeastern Massachusetts, as well as Massachusetts. I believe, prior to the pandemic, we had the second-largest chapter in the state. So, on November 14, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Taunton High School's DECA Club will host a Miles for MDA event. The event will take place at Taunton High's Alexa Stadium track and is planned to gather various members of the greater Taunton community, including other high schools. A $25 minimum donation is required per individual, and all proceeds will be allocated to the association. In years prior to COVID-19, DECA had raised over $7,000 for MDA. Clubs and teams are asked to participate by setting up a table and selling goods or creating activities. Dunkin' Donuts and other area businesses will donate coffee and offer assistance. Taunton's DECA advisor, Jesse McPhail, is excited to host this event in person and has communicated with other schools that may wish to collaborate with Taunton. I can attest, the last time we held this event, there were several area high schools who attended and participated. With their eyes set on expanding their outreach in the greater Taunton area, the Taunton High School DECA chapter has an ambitious goal of growing the event to include DECA chapters from surrounding schools. The Muscular Dystrophy Association has been well-known since the 1950s, receiving support from various clubs, groups, schools, and individuals in their commitment to improve the lives of many people with a disease. Also on the calendar is an induction ceremony for members of DECA. This will be, there will be two inductions on 11/16 in the high school auditorium and one on 12/17 in the high school's presentation room. A keynote speaker will be determined and will provide a keynote address, followed by the distribution of certificates and pins for members. Taunton DECA continues to serve as a leader at the state level and plans to help organize a statewide competition this school year. They will prepare for a mock district competition at Taunton High School on Tuesday, December 7, 2021. If any school board members are interested in serving as judges or any business leaders in the community interested in serving as judges, please contact my office and we will forward your name and contact information to Jesse McPhail. Last but not least, I want to provide a shout-out and a special recognition to the Taunton Education Association and the 24 individuals who were recognized and who retired from the Taunton Public Schools. Now, the 24 number may seem large, but that is a total of employees who retired over a two-year period that did not recognize or have a banquet during the COVID-riddled school year, which was last year. So, the banquet agenda began with the introduction of retirees, followed by words by the master ceremonies, James Quaintance, T.E.A. president, a scholarship committee report from Deb Tokaz Cudero, a toast for the retirees, and remarks from Mayor Sean O'Connell, State Representative Carol Dougherty. Louis Laura was there on behalf of Senator Pacico. And I just, I think it's appropriate that we recognize the individuals who retired. So, bear with me as I read the 24 names. David Anderson, Kathy Burns, Kathleen Mello, Fran Mushro, Maria Rodriguez, Lee Whalen, Susan Hannigan, William Ventura, Anne Marie Benedetti, Jean Fabian, Robert McCabe, Robin Nickerson, Michael Kucha, Cheryl Boyce, Jacqueline Pacini, Paula Wilber, Amy Burrigard, Anne Marie Benasato, Louis Benjamin, Susan Berquist, Patty Jo Dougherty, Cindy Hawkins, Alice Vardner, and Lucinda Wilkie Rosenberg. Also in attendance were 10 members of the banquet committee who devoted their time to assure a pleasurable and rewarding retirement ceremony for Taunton's educators. Special thanks to Suzanne Franco, who serves as the board chairperson, to our own DJ, and I believe a first-grade teacher here at E. Paul School, Mary Ann Elstrom, provide entertainment. And we also had the services of an MC from the four public schools, Stephen Mata. So, again, I just want to share my appreciation and thanks to all those members who retired. Your contributions, I believe, totaled nearly 500 years of dedicated service to the Taunton Public Schools. That is quite an achievement. And with that, that concludes my report.
Talking points?
Oh, talking points, thank you, Mr. Souza, for having my back always. So, at a future school committee meeting on November 17, we will present a diploma to Mr. Richard Pimento, class of 1964. Unfortunately, Mr. Pimento could not be with us this evening due to a family member who's recovering from a medical procedure. But he plans to be with us on 11/17, and we will present him with his honorary diploma. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Before I just continue, I just have to say that I was unable to make the banquet because I was away. But, you know, it's interesting, I've been here for a little bit. Half of those people on there I know personally, and quite a few of them taught my children. And then one of them was my high school classmate. So, it just goes to show I'm getting up there in years. What is the wishes of the committee with the report?
Steven Plaisson, file?
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor. Oh, sorry, Ms. Dougherty, on discussion?
Yes, you should always look over here. Thank you, just a question to Mr. Cabral through you, Mr. Souza. Congratulations on the 1.7 million funds to support our technology efforts. So, on the receipt of these funds, are we making a plan for the utilization of these funds? So, there are quite a number of things that you have written here that the resources could be used for. So, I guess, two questions. Will we be making a plan out of our technology department, I guess? And is that money distributed, how is that money distributed? Do we get a check or is it over a period of time or how does that work?
I can answer the second question first. So, the second question, the funding will not be coming, or we will not receive the funding? funding. The way the grant was written, the funding will go directly to the vendors, which were written into the grants. So that's how the funding will be handled. And I do know with the way the grant was written, a plan had to be provided. So when Mrs. Blino at a future meeting presents an update on the IT department, I will make sure she includes the plan. But if the wishes of the committee are to receive an update sooner than later, I can have Mrs. Blino prepare something sooner.
Why don't we just send a, why don't, can we just get like a written one, one or two pages on that to the, all the committee members now?
Yes, I can have Mrs. Blino prepare a plan. Mrs. Moynihan, could you please make note and we will, we will contact Mrs. Blino.
Just since it's already written really, because you've replied for the grant, just a matter of.
We just, there's so much money floating around and will apparently continue to be that it's really important. And I think about my colleagues who were on a TCAM candidates night, some of them were asked the question about how the ESER funds were being used and what was the plan for the other funds. And that's a tough question because there's a lot of activity going on. So knowing exactly where these monies are going is really important.
And lucky for us, we have a 30-page document that outlines how we're using our ESER 2 and ESER 3. So if anybody in the public would like to see that plan or anybody on the city side, our city council members, I'd be happy to share our ESER 2 and ESER spending plan, which again is going back into our classrooms to support our students' academic growth and also support their mental health and also to ensure that we have a robust technology plan moving forward because we've invested heavily in, in technology and using my, my crystal ball. I don't see technology going away anytime soon. I'm happy that we're resorting back to a more traditional approach to teaching and learning. But again, lessons learned from the pandemic, we need to be sure that we are able to pivot should there be a need.
So your idea about sharing it with public, somehow it is public information along with our budget. So I think that the public would be pleased with the way in which the school department has planned to spend those resources and having it be public, I think is really important. Just my quick second question. You referenced a report when you were reporting on the special education outcome. So two questions. You said something about we could read the report. So will you provide it to us or is it online or where is that?
I'll work with the special education department to provide you with what was shared by DESI.
And could you tell me how, how DESI collected the data? Was it interview or visits or?
Combination of all the above. So a lot of documentation, a lot of meetings, a lot of interviews, and a lot of, a lot of checks and balances to make sure that we are following and adhering to their guidelines.
So do you know parents who are involved in the interview?
I, I will ask and get that information back to you, Mr. Doherty.
I'm sure it's in the report. Thank you, thank you.
On the motion, all those in favor. Opposed, the ayes have it. And just to follow up on that, I think that that's an important information on the special ed component because, you know, we hear a lot of rumors going around of this and that about special ed, but when the state, when the state comes in and the state auditor and finds no findings, we're doing a good job and, and we can always continuously improve. But when the state Department of Education comes in and does one of those audits, I've, I've been involved in some audits here as a member going years back. It's, that's good news. So congratulations to the administration and the special ed department. Administrator Business Staffing Report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiori substituting for Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance and Law Committee met this evening with myself and Mr. Souza. Again, Mr. Martin was absent due to a illness and we offer him our prayers for recovery. There were no student activities on this month's, this meeting's agenda. We had two warrants on bills payable, one item from fiscal year 21 for the amount of $16,967.97 and a full warrant for fiscal 22 of $351,494.11. And then we had a report on special ed legal expenditures, about $1,000 over the last And that's the report.
Wishes of the committee?
Motion.
Motion, uh.
Adopt, adopt or recommend.
Motion made to accept the report and adopt the recommendation of the Subcommittee. Do I hear a second?
Question.
Second, then we, second by Ms. Doherty on the, on the motion, on the, on the discussion, Ms. Doherty.
Sorry that I missed the meeting. I would have asked the question. It has to do with the, the facility. So the good news is that the windows at the Kohanet School are being installed or have been, completed the installation, but I have to say that the, I imagined that the windows that would be installed would be big windows that fit those spaces and they're little squinchy tiny glass windows that probably emit very little light and no one can see out of them. And they, and they probably don't open either. So I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering about that style and design of the windows, making the Kohanet School not look like the historic facility that it is, but something very different than it was. Have you seen the windows, Mr. Cabral?
I have and I, I think it's going to be one of those things at the preference because I do get the reports from the site supervisor, the project manager, which I was reviewing today. And I'm pleasantly pleased with the, with the windows. I believe that the windows will, are durable, the windows will, will last. I know during advisory yesterday when we met with the Alternative High School, Mr. Delaney, who's there on a daily basis, was very pleased with the work that he is seeing and the progress that's being made. And to be outfitting that entire building with brand-new windows that do open, do allow some light, they may not be the full casing that some of, some of us had hoped for, but to know that we're getting those windows, maybe 20 or 30 cents on the dollar based on the reimbursement. I think it's with a new roof and along with new doors, I, I'm pleased with what we are getting and the value that we are receiving in return. But I understand even with the new Mulcahy, even with the accelerated repair project at Bennett, Galligan, and Martin, and I think back to the new roof that we received at Martin, maybe 15 years ago, that was the vegetative roof, there was a lot of criticism of that, but that portion of the roof hasn't leaked. So I guess what I would say is we have new windows, they are energy efficient, we got them at a discounted rate thanks to the MSBA grant. So I for one am happy to see that building getting a much-needed facelift, but I also understand that there may be some in the public who may have had a different preference or preferred a different style of window. And based on the pictures that I saw today, it does appear that we are getting a lot of natural light into the rooms and I'd be happy to take any of the school board members through any of the completed areas if you'd like to see for yourself and touch and feel and open and, and get a sense. But I do understand some of the sentiment that may be out there, that they're not full windows that cover the casing side to side, but I, I am pleased with, with what we're receiving and the work that went into it.
Just my final comment, I haven't heard from anyone in the public. It is my own observation, passing by that building, however frequently I do that, I think about the renovation at the Walker School where those windows were big, huge windows. And if you go by that renovation, the windows that have been replaced, replaced the old windows are the same size and basically designed as the old windows, energy efficient because the language windows are made today than they were in yesteryear. But I'd like to go inside the school because I, I, one of the things that I want to know is whether or not if a student is standing by a window, whether those glass portions of that window are too high for that student to look out that window. It's way up in the second half of the window. I, I won't say anymore, you can read in between the lines, Mr. Cabral. Sorry, thank you for the indulgence.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. On the motion to adopt, uh, accept the report and adopt the recommendation of the Finance and Law Subcommittee, I'm sorry, Mrs. Fagan.
No, I, I saw them for the first time today. Yeah, I'm sorry, yesterday. And my husband and I both looked and they, I know what you're saying, that they're really not aesthetically pleasing, if you want to use, that's probably my best description of them. They don't seem to be what you should have in a building like that. And I'm very aware of Walker School because I have two children that live in Berkeley. And when I go to visit them, I go by them and I look at the building and it looks beautiful. But I, I'm probably more of a proponent of having something look like the time period it was built in and it kind of throws the building off a little bit. But that's what I think I spoke to you about last night, Mr. Cabral. I just, it just looks like it's, it's sectioned into three parts and the middle part, it's kind of like Neapolitan ice cream, you know, the three, and, and there's the glass in the middle. That's all I could think of and there's the glass in the middle. And I, I was thinking the same thing. I said, how much light do they let in? Though they said, you know, the windows before were tinted, so you really didn't have that much light in there. I guess you'd have to really go in, you know, I mean, I'll take you up on the.
Yeah, the windows before were, I believe, Plexiglas that are hazed over. So to go from Plexiglas similar to what we have currently at Hopewell, I was in Hopewell yesterday and it, I, I, again, I welcome the opportunity to walk any school board member through because the images that I saw, which were photos, you do see a lot of natural light coming in and the lights that are in there, don't forget, the lights that are in that building were renovated or retrofitted back in 2005, 2006. So you do get a lot of light based on the renovation that took place when that building was brought up to code.
All set.
Thank you.
All righty. On the motion to accept, adopt the, accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Moving on to the High School Subcommittee, 10/19/21, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. Palowski, Mr. Palowski substituting, pinch hitting, we have to have a baseball term today, pinch hitting for Mrs. Almeida.
I am honored, thank you, Mrs. Almeida. On Tuesday, October 19th, the High School Subcommittee met with the THS Advisory Committee at Taunton High School Tagged In at approximately 3:00 p.m. In attendance were Joe Supien Almeida, the Chair of the High School Subcommittee, Christine Fagan and myself, members of the Subcommittee, Carol Doherty, school committee member, John Cabral, Superintendent, Nicole Drake, Hector Arponte, and Araceli Alisea, senior members of the Advisory Committee, Natalie Duncan, freshman member of the Advisory Committee, Scott Holcomb, Principal, and Jason Torres, Jason Torres Associate Principal. At 3:06, Mrs. Almeida welcomed the group and asked everyone to introduce themselves. Students were then asked to discuss and share their thoughts with the Advisory Committee. The Advanced Placement Seminar is going well. The course was created to introduce and prepare students for the rigor of advanced placement courses. Students expressed no concerns and highlighted an opportunity Principal Holcomb will afford all THS students. Each Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:30 a.m., students can meet with Principal Holcomb to discuss their ideas, issues, or concerns during a student leadership summit. They were also encouraged that for more to be done throughout the high school to get more students involved in clubs and activities. One suggestion was to bring back the two-day eighth-grade boot camp led by juniors and seniors. Students stated that the start of the school year felt faster than expected post-COVID, but feel that students are beginning to settle in and hit their stride. They were excited about the news, they were excited about the new clubs at THS, Next Gen, and Amnesty International Club. There was also talk about there being a Future Teachers Club of America, Future Teachers of America Club. There was discussion regarding phones and phone use in schools. The students did an excellent job articulating the appropriate use of phones during the school day while also expressing displeasure with their peers who misuse their phones to the detriment of the school student body. They feel that due to being out of school for nearly two years, a segment of the student body is still adjusting to the roles and expectations of being in school full-time and in person. Students also discussed the generation gap and the use reliance on phones for this current generation. It was also stated that much of the behavior seen in schools throughout the Commonwealth and country reflects what is taking place throughout many communities and witnessed on TV and social media. Students also expressed creative ideas on collecting information from the student body they were elected to represent via surveys and/or a Dropbox. Principal Holcomb also shared several proactive measures soon to be implemented throughout THS. Teachers will read morning announcements to the students during the start of each school day, thus ensuring all students and staff have access to school-wide information. Implementation of a newsletter will be shared with students, families, and staff. Mrs. Almeida thanked everyone for their time. Mrs. Fagan motioned to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Palowski, meeting adjourned at 4:03 p.m. Later on in the, later on in the day at Hopewell School, the current location of the Taunton Alternative High School, at approximately 5:00 p.m., we met with the Taunton Alternative High School Advisory Committee. In attendance was Mrs. Almeida, Mrs. Fagan, myself, Superintendent Cabral, Hannah McGinnis, Taunton Alternative High School Senior, Jordan Costa, Taunton Alternative High School Senior, and Robert Delaney, Principal of Taunton Alternative High School. 5:03 p.m., Mrs. Almeida welcomed the group, asked them to introduce themselves. Students were then asked to discuss and share their thoughts with the Advisory Committee. Students discussed, discussed how pleased they were with the school. For some students, a smaller school with smaller class size helps to reduce their anxiety. They express how grateful they were to the Taunton Public Schools for students needing a little more. Having access to an alternative school setting, students at Taunton Alternative High School can get back on track, recover credits, and graduate from high school. Both students in attendance also shared their hopes and dreams for the remainder of the school year and life post Taunton Alternative High School. Currently, one of the students, Jordan, is playing basketball at Taunton High School. Heather will be attending cosmetology school after graduation. Jordan is planning to apply to attend the Air Force and possibly attend Bristol Community College now located in Taunton on Hamilton Street. Students expressed that transportation was not a concern as transportation is available to all those who require it. Communication between Taunton High School and Taunton Alternative High School is good as Taunton, Taunton Alternative High School students are aware of all the activities and events that they can attend while attending school at Taunton Alternative High School. There was a discussion regarding early college opportunities. Principal Delaney shared a success story with the group. When asked if they would like to see new programs, students unequivocally stated they were very happy with the school as it is. Mrs. Almeida thanked everyone for their time. Mrs. Fagan motioned to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Palow, seconded by myself, meeting adjourned at 5:37 p.m. And that concludes the report of the High School Subcommittee.
Wishes of the committee on the High School Subcommittee Report?
Received and placed on file.
Motion made and seconded, to receive and place on file, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is new business voting delegate for the MASC Annual Business Meeting. So I had this put on the agenda because I found out that this, the delegate can, can also do this remotely via Zoom. So is any of my colleagues wish to be a voting delegate to represent us there? Okay, that answers the question. Thank you. I guess no one wishes, no one wants to participate, which is fine. We've, we've had them on and off before. So, all right, I'm going to move on to item number two, Internet and Network Acceptable Use Policy, IU, excuse me, IJNDB Policy. And we just want to refer that to the high, excuse me, to the Rules Subcommittee for a further review with the administration.
So move.
Motion made, second by Mrs. Fagan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business action item update, voter registration update Taunton Alternative High School, Taunton High School. Superintendent Cabral.
So in your packet, I have a memo or a letter from Principal Holcomb regarding the work that was done at the high school, Taunton High School to onboard, to pre-register students regarding the voting process. So it gives me pleasure to update you on the tremendous progress we have made thus far on voter registration and preregistration. This year, this year-long recurring initiative is being implemented and overseen by Associate Principal Joseph Pomfret and Curriculum Supervisor Peter Gillan. So far, the following has been done at Taunton High School. Taunton High School has partnered with the National Voter Registration Day and has obtained posters and materials instructing students on how to, how to register to vote and/or pre-register the. to vote and/or pre-register to vote if they are 16 years old, or over 16 years old, excuse me. Voter registration and pre-registration forms are now available to all students in all four house offices. A voter flyer was recreated by students in the graphic arts class and posted in various places throughout the campus. A voting pamphlet from the Secretary of State Office educates students as to the rationale and reasons for voting is important. A link has been added to the high school website. City Elections Department has been made, has made more than 300 voter registration cards available to our students. We have reached out to the Youth and Government Club, who expressed excitement and willingness to distribute information and plan additional logistics of getting registration forms to each student who is eligible to vote and pre-register. We have set a goal for getting half of our students pre-registered to vote by the end of this academic year. We anticipate continuing working with City Hall and other governmental departments to bring voter awareness to the students at Taunton High School. In the interim, it is important for our community members to know we are committed to the following: providing registration access to all students interested regardless of party or candidate preference or any other factors; being non-transactional, meaning no student will be pressured or forced by anyone to register, and no students will be given any prizes, gifts for registering. And I also want to make a note, too, that part of my work and part of my growth as a superintendent is to make sure that when programs or initiatives are rolled out at Taunton High School that we include students at the Taunton Alternative High School. So I've asked Principal Holcomb to connect with Principal Delaney to make sure that students at the Alternative High School are given the same access and also provided the same awareness so that if they are interested in voting or registering to vote or pre-registering to vote, that they have the same opportunities as their brothers and sisters at Taunton High School.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Any questions? Moving on to the next item on the, oh, sorry, Ms. Dougherty.
So this is going to be an ongoing effort as elections occur. It's going to always be a part of what the high school will do in terms of supporting students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Next item on the agenda, Taunton Nursing Home Update. And we want to refer that to the action items. The Superintendent doesn't have any update at this particular moment. He's still, they're still in discussions with the city. So we just want to refer that to the action items to put that on the action item list so we don't lose track of it. Could I have a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Action item review, on the action items that are currently on there, I don't see any changes. Anyone, anyone have any comments on that? We'll move on from that. Mrs. Fagan?
Just a quick thing. I'm sorry, I didn't realize the, did we skip the, oh, no, we didn't do this, the internet policy. I'm sorry. Under New Business, I, I became aware of something that I think we need to kind of keep an eye on. As I was driving through the city, and I noticed it, too, it was also brought up in the questionnaire we got from the teachers about being concerned about us running short on school space. And I spoke to Mr. Cabral about it last night. There are some huge swaths of land that are being cleared for houses. Is there any way at all, when they start approving those things on the city level, that we can get some idea of the number of homes that are going around? Because I know that Warner Boulevard, there's a big swath. Highland, down from your house where you live, Ms. Dougherty, there's a, I, I looked, I went, wow. But I think Mrs. Almeida knew about someplace else, but there seems to be a lot of homes going, going up. And I'm looking at schools that we're already pretty chock full with already. And yet we, you know, I said, I actually made a comment to Mr. Cabral last night, maybe we better think about keeping Hopewell open because I'm really worried about, I mean, if everybody has two children, that's going to load up the schools quite a bit. I don't know if you, you are concerned about that, Mr. Cabral, but it-
I'm always concerned about enrollment. And it's something that Mrs. Monahan and I and the leadership team and our principals have been actively monitoring this year, especially knowing that we lost about 363 students due to COVID. And we're very eager to see what the bottom line looks like when we submit the final version of the October 1 report, which I'm hoping will be closer to about 8,000. But it does sound like, and maybe it's, I'm not trying to tell the committee what to do or advertise any potential motions, but it does sound like we're about due for a NASDAQ study.
Yep.
We are a member of NASDAQ, so I can reach out to NASDAQ and ask them what it would cost, or even SURFID, what it would cost to do, to provide us with a comprehensive report. Because you're right, there has been a lot of new growth. I feel fairly comfortable with our enrollment numbers and our class side averages at the elementary schools. Our pre-K program continues to be under 300. Pre-COVID, we were about 350, 360. So we're still not seeing all those families return, even though we're ready or on the cusp of opening a classroom at Chamberlain. Middle school and high school is where we probably, middle school, again, not having, not having accurate numbers in front of me. Middle school would be the only area of concern. And the only reason I state that is because we did close a middle school 10 years ago, and went down to three middle schools. But again, we did move a grade to the high school. So without doing a deeper analysis to see where we are, all the studies that we received up until this point, pre-pandemic, did show our enrollment flatlining and eventually decreasing. But with the latest census, the impact of COVID, Boston losing 26,000 residents during this latest census, New Bedford approaching 100,000, Fall River breaking 90,000, and I think Taunton is on the cusp of 60,000. So it would be advantageous for us to authorize the administration to do that study.
And she can, Ms. Dougherty can verify this. There's going to be some shifts in the, you know, what, what communities people are in. I think you're picking up some of Easton, we're losing some of Taunton. And, you know, there's, there's a shift going.
So it may be wise-
People coming out to the, into, you know, where we live. And that's what I was concerned about.
We know why people are being drawn to southeast in Massachusetts. The rents that you pay for a 600 or 700 square foot apartment in Boston, you could probably cover a mortgage with in south, in many areas in southeast Massachusetts.
Yeah, I understand it. That's why it, it's a concern to me because I know Mulcahy, we combine two schools there. We don't, I'm trying to figure out where we're going to put these students if they come in. You know, I don't know how many more walls we can put up, but we, we lost, you know, the school down, down the way at that school, that's, that's apartments now. But I think that's probably going to be elderly apartments. But the, you know, all this other stuff going around, I'm really concerned about if we're going to have room. Because there is that shift going on. But I, I don't know, I don't know if the council have a, or how much attention we pay to what's actually going on in the city.
So what I can say is Mr. Scanlon's office, and I believe the zoning board.
Okay.
My office does receive plot plans, reports, or notices when there are going to be meetings or hearings regarding developments, or when a new law has been allocated or determined to be buildable. We do get that information so that Mrs. Perry on Student Services can keep track of that.
I guess my point is, can we just kind of keep an eye on that?
But again, I, I do believe, we're only capable of so much on the school department side. I think an analysis or a study would be something either this committee or a future committee may want to entertain.
Okay, thank you.
I think that what we'll do is, I think it's probably about time, I think we'll put that on the agenda. I can't, we can't vote on it tonight because it's not on the agenda. But I think we'll add that to the, add that to the agenda for the next meeting. And that way we can vote on that at the next meeting to have that report. So, Mrs. Almeida.
I don't know what report you're talking about, Mr. Jaren.
We're, to have a, to have a NASDAQ study done.
This committee person would not be in favor of that. We had a NASDAQ study done a couple, not even four or five years ago. And it really did jack nothing for us, to be honest with you, for the kind of money that we're paying. If you're getting the plot, plot plans from Scanlon, and we're getting that information from the city, we know how many houses are going up. Off Brig Street, I would, not Brig Street, Highland Street, I think there's approximately 40 houses that they just built. Now they look like they're building some more up there. So that's the area we need to concentrate on. And then we'd need to find out what other plans you got from Mr. Scanlon to figure out how many houses are going. And we internally can do that. We don't need NASDAQ to do it because every time they do it, it's over $20,000, and they give us no information whatsoever. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
That's okay. We'll put it on the agenda, and the committee can discuss it then. I'd rather have not any more discussion on it right now because it's not on the agenda. So we'll put it on the agenda, and everyone can voice their opinion, and we can vote it up or down at the next meeting. The next item on the agenda is Executive Session.
I'd love to-
I'm sorry, Ms. Dougherty, before we go into Executive Session.
I just want to support what my colleagues are saying about the population growth. This has come up a couple of times over the years where we've seen these developments go up, two and three bedroom homes, and ask the question about, I mean, the city does an infrastructure impact study when those great swaths of housing go up. And the question has been asked previously by us, what about a population impact? How is that going to affect the schools? And I think that that's really, really critical. You've got the 45 houses down the street from me, and they're putting in another 45 houses next door to it. So that, so both my colleagues, I think we need to pay attention to that. But I did want to, I did want to ask you to, under Unfinished Business, for the next agenda, once again, this item about the election of a student who becomes a non-voting member of this school committee. And we've gone around and around with it because the young people come from the Advisory Committee. But the law is very clear about electing someone from that body to be the non-voting member. And I think, Mr. Cabral, the last time we talked about it, you thought you might get some, reach out to Mr. Holcomb to ask about the possibility of organizing that kind of election, and he wouldn't report back. So I'm asking if you can put it on the next agenda, the next school committee agenda. This is like the 15th time I've raised a-
Yeah, I, I thought we were, from what, I'll let the superintendent answer. But from what we've been told by legal counsel, we got an opinion by legal counsel, that now the student advisory is represented here at the table, and one of those people is the representative.
But they're not here.
Well, because they left.
They don't get a packet.
Because they left.
A non-voting member of the school committee from the student body should receive this packet of information so that they can come and fully participate. I mean, certainly there are things on here that are boring to them, but we have always found collectively that these young people come on Student Government Day. And they, and even last night at the student advisory, they're so articulate and so cogent and so interested in what's going on around them. The student forum that was held, again, for candidates for office, same thing, the young people that came and talked at that student forum are very articulate and interested in their world around them. And I think that we need to look at this seriously and act as the law defines.
Well, I, I'm not going to disagree. I'm going to let the superintendent answer. I'm just going to, I'm just going to state that the chair at every meeting talks to those students, the representatives from the student advisory. I tell them their role. I ask them if they want to speak, to raise their hand. I tell them, and, you know, if they want to address a subject. So certainly this chair has made it a point to make sure that they're included. I'll let the superintendent answer the bigger question.
No, I'm just excited to see the students continually returning in numbers. In the past, it was one student, hit or miss some weeks because of their commitments. Now we're seeing multiple students attending. Mrs. Devine will make sure the high school advisory gets four packets when we send out school committee packets. So we will, that, we can check that box. And Principal Holcomb, last night, I think he articulated pretty clear, whatever this committee wants with the kids, he'll do. So if it's a matter of just making sure that of those four students, one of them is elected to serve as the non-voting of those five students, thank you, Mrs. Souza, having my back again, if one of those five students is elected to serve as that member, Principal Holcomb will be happy to carry that out for us. So I think we can easily satisfy that request.
Thank you. And I appreciate the efforts that are being made all around. But again, it is a requirement of the law to have a single student be the representative. If they wanted to rotate, it, perhaps they don't understand what a non-voting member actually does. If they're not receiving the information, if they're not provided with a little bit of training in terms of trying to understand what, what the role is, then they're not going to understand. They come and they give their report, and they do such a nice job. But we're missing that one piece. We haven't, we haven't jumped the canyon to get that one student sitting here in, in an equal way with us participating in the debate and discussion. And that's going to take a while for a young person to feel comfortable doing that. But nonetheless, that's what we have talked about, and that's what the law says. So I do wish that we would move forward with, with that effort. Thank you, thank you.
Any other, any other concerns on unfinished business? Okay, we're going to move on to Executive Session. And the motion to go into Executive Session should be, motion to go into Executive Session to discuss strategy with respects to collective bargaining with the Taunton Education, Educational Secretaries and Assistance Association pursuant to Exemption 3, General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, and to conduct strategies, to conduct the Strategy Session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Exemption 2, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A 2, and to reconvene in open session. Chair, want to take a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mrs. Fagan, please call the rule.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes, we are in Executive Session. Marcus, we will be back. Thank you. I call the school committee back to order. Mrs., Chair, want to take a motion to come out of Executive Session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, a roll call vote to come out of Executive Session. Mrs. Fagan?
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Souza?
Yes. There were two motions made in Executive Session, and we will repeat them here. Mrs., Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. The fastest negotiating session we've ever had, an hour and 40 minutes with Taunton Education and Secretaries and Assistants, Educators, Secretaries and Assistants. One, the motion is a one-year, to adopt a one-year successor agreement as negotiated with the test.
And who made the second, the second? Mr. Palowski made the second. So the motion was made and seconded on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan?
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Souza?
Yes. Ms. Dougherty, the second motion, please.
I'm doing, I thought you were doing the second motion.
Well, I don't know, you have the paper, so you're going to have to do it.
Yes, I'm right. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Glad you, that's all right.
Down at the bottom of that paragraph.
The recommendation that we have adopted is to authorize the administration to increase non-certified substitute teacher pay to 115, $15 a day, and certified substitute teacher pay to $135.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr., by Ms. Dougherty, and seconded by Mr. Palowski on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan, please.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Souza?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is Press Time? No Press Time. Chair, want to take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.